Okay, thank you DeeDee. So we can call the meeting to order at, what's our time? Sorry, 7:01. So yeah, thank you all for joining us for this special board meeting tonight. Thanks for raising the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, sorry DeeDee, I didn't ask you to roll call if you could just do that for us.
Good, it's good. I see Kate is here. I do not see Kristen yet. Kathy is here. Arka is here. Megan is here and Chris Wilson and Scott is absent. And all of our guests, thank you guys for coming.
Unmuted, okay, unmuted. So I don't believe we had any citizens comment come through? No, okay. All right. Well, I know we have a condensed agenda. It's primarily on the COVID-19 update and reopen plan update. I did have a brief comment before we dig into that. I just feel it's important to acknowledge that amidst, of course, our global pandemic that we're all fighting through right now, our nation is grappling with a lot of systemic issues such as racism and lack of empathy and compassion and injustice that it has struggled to address for generations frankly. Action is required on this front and I do believe us, we as a Board of Education can help bring about long-lasting change. We as board members are responsible to hold our positions in this town in a professional manner, obviously, under guidance from policies and regulations and the very mission that we voted to approve this summer, thanks to everyone here. And that is to provide our students the skills essential to reach their highest potential in a safe environment for learning as they aspire to become responsible, respectful, and civic-minded members of society. We commit to help educate, challenge, and inspire each child to excel as lifelong learners who can adapt constructively in an ever-changing, multicultural, and technological world. I'm really proud of that mission that we worked on together. So as we work together to explore necessary change over time, I implore all of us to keep the volunteer Board of Education in school in the best light that we can as we work so hard to navigate both professionally and personally through these difficult times. So with that, I just wanted to make those comments. And then I know that our superintendent, principal, and staff have been working extremely hard on the next agenda item. So I will turn the floor to Adam and Amy to write the reopen plan update, which is item number four.
Yes, at the last board meeting, we made the decision to return to school for a partial day, early dismissal day on September 30th, Wednesday, September 30th. And this is part of a plan. When we opened up, many school districts across the state had a hybrid plan and half the students came on Monday, Tuesday, the other half came on Thursday, Friday, and Wednesday's was used as a remote learning day. We were able to bring all of our students back on K through eight, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Wednesday is a remote day. And we had every intention of trying to bring the children back for a half day. But when we went back to look at all of the details, there were certain things that required us to come back to the board and to just take another look at this because just based on what's happening, we might need just a few more weeks to plan for the re-entry into bringing the students back on Wednesday. And I certainly want to bring them back as soon as possible to help everybody. But you know, we ran into some things such as our early dismissal is at 1:00. And we wound up having three high schools that have a dismissal, an early dismissal on Wednesday, therefore, there's no way that we could have the buses here at 1:00 to have our dismissal. We can do a 12:00 dismissal, which does give us a legitimate, you know, school day based on the hours of what's happening. And then there were some curriculum things related to remote learning. And there's been teams of people looking at the best way to do this because the challenge is that all sorts of musical programs and other things were set up on Wednesday and there were other programs that were set up on Wednesday and we need just a little bit more time with reorganizing those. Plus, we still have about 58 remote learners and we really need to look at ways that we can increase the opportunities for remote learner students. And I'm going to bring this over to Amy now because she had several points that she went back and reviewed with the faculty. And it's unfortunate, I wish I had all of this information. We had all of this information. We really thought that we could do it. And of course, if the board says come back on, you know, Wednesday, the 30th of September, we will make every effort to do that. But we might just need just a little bit more time to really, you know, make this just a lot more successful. Amy, do you want to go over some of the things related to meeting the requirements for Addendum 12, the hours of instruction for remote learners? And, you know, see what you're pursuing with the faculty and staff? And this will give the board an opportunity to take a look at your assessment.
So when we met at the last board meeting, I think that we were under this assumption that, you know, us as a faculty and staff, we were moving towards, okay, we're ready for this to, we're ready for them to come back and on Wednesday. And we have these plans in place that are going to fall into place. And so as, after that meeting, as we came back and started to dig deeper in what is this going to look like, we've come into quite a few snags that we take Wednesdays right now to be able to iron those out. So a lot of it has to do with scheduling. A lot has to do with still supporting families at home. So when we send Chromebooks home with kids on Wednesdays, if they're new to taking that Chromebook home, those families tend to call on Wednesday and ask us for support. Sometimes what happens is we might have an iPad set up and ready to go and then when they get it home, it's not connecting, they come down and get support. My biggest fear in that essence, as it is surely dwindled. So we know Wednesdays are working for us right now. But I think that for us in this moment in time, our biggest fear is that at any given moment, we could be closed and we want to make sure all these things are in place as much as they can be for a potential closure. So as we hear other schools closing near and far, it always makes you feel that it, you know, it could be anybody at any point in time, somebody could come back and either test positive or we could have a set of sickness that could close us and just being prepared for that. So we've taken the time, last Wednesday, we, our schedule has been built for what that will look like. And I thought I had shared that at one point, but that, but there's a clear picture of what it will look like if we are closed two to five days or 12 weeks. We are always on the verge of the what-if. So helping people in those platforms, we do get still phone calls for Google Classroom when kids are at home because miraculously, they forget what they've done in school and then they go home and they can't figure it out and their parent is calling for help and it's a simple fix and it's a simple fix then on Thursday. So a lot of times, we are reteaching on Thursday, maybe the misstep that they made on Wednesday. Because nothing will be worse than not being prepared for when, when or if we ever have to be shut down. So that's, that's one of my main concerns and I feel like over the course of the past, you know, few weeks and maybe the next two weeks, we can really continue to fix those items so kids are a little bit more secure in that. You know, if we, we need to just prepare our staff for coming back on Wednesdays, many of them will have to find, you know, they have daycare, but a solid daycare because they know that they'll be, their kids are kind of being shuffled all around the place at this point. So we want to make sure that, you know, our staff is all set. When we look at, one of our biggest hurdles right now is remote learning. We are a small school, that's one of our pluses, and we have staff that are at capacity at this point. So we are currently looking at shift, potentially shifting our model to a model that utilizes a program for our third through eighth graders so we can make sure that they are getting those experiences for them. And nothing's worse than as a teacher feeling like you are not providing enough. I'm not providing enough, I'm not providing enough. You see as a teacher what you're doing in class, so it's easy to, you know, print what you need and pass them out and do that right in class. And it's not always translated to online. And online, as you know, online work takes a lot longer. And so we, you know, their planning time has not increased contractually, it's still 45 minutes a day for in-person kids. And so really, on the Wednesdays, we are trying to really beef up what we are doing to make sure that our in-person kids and our remote kids are getting that, those experiences. And that is one of our larger hurdles at this point, is which way are we navigating with our remote learners? We want to make sure that they are getting an education that, you know, falls within the guidelines, but we also want to make sure that they're getting an education that we, you know, that I personally would be happy with for my own children. And I think that's the piece where we're struggling to find that balance. And like I said, our staff is really at capacity right now of what, we're actually operating two schools. So I'm the principal of a remote school essentially, and I'm the principal of an elementary school that's kind of combined in one. So for our staff members, that's, they're kind of doing both. And it, you know, and depending on which route we go, we will look at what support we might need. We might need, you know, some coordinating support for after-school, potentially, and shuffling some existing staff to be able to support an online program for our remote learners. So that's, that's kind of the direction. So when we work on Wednesdays, we work on what is going to look like, are we making a shift for them? You know, we are bound for their education and we're bound for our in-person education. So those are two, those are the two huge hurdles right now that we're working on and having, being able to have a couple more weeks being online kind of helps us close some of these gaps for us. My projection would be, you know, a couple more weeks online, coming back to the next board meeting, reevaluating, moving to early dismissals. And early dismissals would be at noon. So that's also going to take some configuring because when I thought of it today, these are the things you think about, I think we actually might need to flip-flop our car rider and our bus time in order for those buses to get out, to drop those kids, and then be able to go to those high schools. So this is something that also needs to be communicated, okay, what time is the bus happening? And then what time would car rider happen? And it just dawned on me today and what I was thinking that we have to, we're planning for that, we have to plan for that. So those are the things that come up quite frequently, you know, in where, you know, giving us a couple more weeks just to be able to solidify those things and get those off the ground and kind of put out those fires, I think would be helpful. I do think that when we do a 12:00 dismissal, what we'll do is particularly grab and go lunch. So for any students that, you know, would like, you know, a lunch for that day, lunch would be grab and go because then we can get those instructional hours in place. One of the reasons to shift from full day home to then half-day home to then full day in would be, we are taking kids who are now coming in four days and they're doing a great job. And then we're wanting them to now come a little bit more on Wednesday and then we want them to come back fully on Wednesday. So I think the gradual shift, we've worked so hard in our reopen plan with implementing, you know, all, all the 47 pages of this reopen plan and being able to shift and change it, rushing in and doing it when we're not quite ready, I think is going to hurt us in the long run. So those are kind of the key points to just pushing this out a little bit longer and giving us some time to work with. Really, it's the remote, the remote piece that, that we are working with and trying to be able to solidify what that's going to look like and want to be able to say that this is what it is and what it'll look like for those kids and, kids and students. It's a hard decision to keep your kids at home and you want to make sure that, you know, they're getting, you know, an education while, while they're home and, you know, are in-person in school. On a bright note, tomorrow, you know, thank you to the YSB, they are sponsoring, they are sponsoring an ice cream truck. So it's kind of, it's listening, I sent home a quick note today on that. So, you know, things are looking great and I'm so happy that, it was scary in the beginning and I think that everybody was nervous and scared, whether you're a parent, a staff member, a child. And I think that now, being able to look back on these past four weeks, you know, kudos to, you know, our-
This is, this is Arka.
Hi.
Hi. I do know, I'm working in a school myself, that the remote learning, balancing those two pieces is very difficult. Can you talk more about what is it that you need in terms of helping with the remote learning piece? Is it, can you just talk more in a little bit detail about that so we can best support those learners as well as the in-school learners?
Yes. So right now, when you look at our class sizes, three through eight, we are on average, you know, five, maybe six kids, let's say an average of five kids per grade level. I mean, which doesn't seem a lot per grade level. And I think the biggest struggle here is, you know, when you, when you think that one way is going to work best just because of what you hear and what you research and then you realize like, gee, this, maybe this isn't, maybe this isn't what we thought it was going to be. So right now, we live stream our reading and math for our, we live stream or provide screencast device for our three through eight learners. We post items in Google Classroom. I think the biggest struggle for our staff is they want to replicate their classroom for at-home kids, which is, it's absolutely impossible. You cannot, you know, there are times when they don't have the right worksheet. There are times when they don't have the right book at home. And those are the, that's the balance where our staff is really, you know, I think they take, it's the personal pride of making it so, it's so similar that it's difficult for them to manage that piece. You know, we're duplicating a lot of worksheets online that you are now making text boxes for and putting them in Google Classroom so you can get responses. Those types of things are bogging people down. There's a lot of still, you know, I was hoping for more guidance from the state on, you know, for remote learning, what does that look like, assessment-wise? What does that look like for them as individuals? How, what is the best practice for grading them? And, you know, are we grading them the same? They're not getting the same. So those are things that we constantly are talking about and sometimes we go round and round about them. But I think that for us, it's the struggle of live streaming at times and being able to manipulate Google Classroom for remote while we have in-person kids and working that, like, how can we balance those pieces? Does that make sense?
This is Kathy, I have one question. Why are we working so hard to remove this at-home Wednesday? Are the teachers upset with it? It seems like a lot of work for no reason other than having their five days a week. I don't think anyone else in the state is five days a week. Why are we going crazy trying to make Wednesday a regular school day?
There are some efforts being made. I attended the East Con Superintendent's meeting this week and the Learn Superintendent's group. And school districts are reviewing how they can get the children back into school. So we might be a little bit ahead of the curve. I know one local school district is going full in this, this coming Monday, but they only have three remote learners right now. And so it was, it was workable. And then other small school districts are doing that. So we're almost there. It's just a question of how do we work out this balance? And one of the things that I wanted to mention, Amy, you have a group that are reviewing Edgenuity?
We are reviewing Edgenuity right now as an online platform for our remote learners. And this, you know, it is something that we are reviewing, it's not set in stone, but it is an option that we are looking at because it is going to provide potentially a little bit more in a program than we can kind of piecemealing and putting this remote together. I think, I think when you think of, okay, if I'm not in school, I can just join, you know, I can live teach, but there's a lot of components to the actual live stream that make it difficult. And combining that with the work in Google Classroom, so teachers are essentially double planning, you know, those pieces. And that's, that's, that is what, so Kathy, you're asking, why are we rushing to move away? And I think our thought was, well, it's, it's going good, we're, we're working at it, we think we can bring kids back. And I think that's where we kind of took that spin last time. But, you know, the more we got in-depth into it now at this point, I'm not so sure that we're, we're quite ready yet to do that.
But such a program also involves, you know, meeting curriculum standards and the way the program is set up, from what I understand, this will allow the students to maintain a connection with curriculum objectives that have a measurable type of thing. And if the homeroom teacher is checking this. And we also think of having something like an after-school program with some of the teachers who may be interested in working just a little bit extra. And we've done this in the past and we have money in the budget to do this, they could also check in with the students and, and follow through at certain grade levels so that we know that they had a rich and viable curriculum and could also connect it with some of the things that are happening in the classroom. So that's a, that's a viable option that we, we may move in that direction. Am I correct, Amy?
That's correct. So this is an option that we're looking at for that, for that purpose, to ensure that we're meeting those needs of those kids while our live teachers are meeting those needs of our in-person kids.
And as I said, we have had after-school programs and we've done this in the past and that is available within our existing budget. The, the other thing is that, you know, we have the grab and go breakfast and actually we had our head cook resign. We have hired a new head cook and our grab and go breakfast with corn products is, is working quite, quite nicely so that, you know, things are working efficiently within the school to make sure that we're maintaining social distancing and keeping cohorts together so that if something were to happen with this cohort approach, it is easy for any contract tracing if there is an issue with a COVID-19 product. And so basically, what we're saying is we, we may need just a little bit more time with this. The transportation is really going well and very, very well organized. It looks, Amy, like you might want the people who are driving to school to get out of school a little bit after the noon time. The buses leave early to-
Yeah, I think it's going to have to be flipped in order for buses to get to high schools early enough. And our, you know, our dismissal has, you know, been going well. And I also feel that it is potential that when we move to, when we move to increasing our time, I also think, and Megan can probably comment about our pickup time, but our pickup time has gotten a lot faster. So I actually think we could potentially move it a little bit if everybody can be on time, you know, a little bit back now that we've kind of got it underway. I'm saying that as we're going into snow season, but I think that that it's possible to be able to do that also. So I think that's another piece that, you know, I'd like to look at before we, you know, I want parents to be able to have time to, you know, plan for those, those things. And grandparents, you get a lot of grand, thank you to all the grandparents that come to go get your children in the afternoon.
Yeah. I'm pretty, I'm pretty able to do whatever, but I just, you guys are doing such a good job. I hate to see you have to go crazy or the teachers trying to put more on their plate.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're getting the gist of how difficult it is through this, how many, how many Wednesdays have we had? Three or four? Three? Four?
I think three or four. I don't, I don't know how anymore. I don't even know what day it is today.
I know, I'm sorry, whatever day it is, I know, it should be, you know, blazing, but um, it just sounds like you're, each Wednesday, you make adjustments that it hasn't felt fulsome enough to feel comfortable, if I'm understanding, and now we're trying to-
I think that's what it is. Yeah.
And there, and there's some things we didn't, we didn't, that come up that are challenging that you don't think about. And there's so many factors that come in. It's easy to say, yep, half-day, but what we don't know is the ripple effect that happens academically, technically, time management, all that kind of, you know, curriculum-wise. And I know that it's really hard to, to balance having two robust programs that are in-person and remote. And what you want to do, and I know the teachers, that they want to give the best robust program they can, you know, and if it takes more time, then it takes more time.
And I think until we really know what, for remote learning, I just, I want to make sure that those kids are spoken for as well as our in-person kids and I want to be able to give, you know, good to both of them and to do it justly. So I want to do justice by both and, you know, working this balance is increasingly difficult. So I think that being able to, you know, we're continuing to reevaluate, we're looking at this program and hopefully by the next board meeting, we will be able to say like, okay, this is, this is the direction we're going in, we're confident in this, we're going to move this way.
I also wanted to mention to the board some of the budgeting considerations that are happening because if we have to purchase a new program, I believe that there's funds there. If we have to have staff complete an after-school program to enhance remote learners or to follow up with students, you know, that would be helpful. And at the last board meeting, I talked about the COVID relief funds and we are receiving an allocation of $260,000. And the grant application was just released two nights ago and we have to have this in by October 2nd so that we're working with completing allocations. And one of the things is at the last meeting, we talked about upgrades with ventilation, with AC, and with transportation. And then there's other areas that we can work on with these funds. But when I originally applied, I wanted to have money in there for personnel. The only thing that was really funded was the bus monitors. So we've hired bus monitors and we've been paying for them and these grants will help with reimbursing the town. So please note that anything that we spend with the $260,000 has to come from our Board of Education budget. And Tracy attended our reopen meeting the other day and quite frankly, I do not have an additional $260,000 in the school budget to make all of these purchases. But if- But if we're approved for reimbursement and the, and the state authorizes that, then I would be able to look and see how much of that we could pay for out of the school budget, but we would have to go back sooner than later to ask the town for an additional allocation because we don't get that money sent to us. It's an expenditure-only budget. And within the process of using the funds, they said, please make sure that you utilize FEMA funds. Well, today, Tracy and I were reviewing the availability of FEMA funds from last year, and we do not have enough expenses to qualify for the FEMA fund. So that means that I would take those things that I sent into the town hall and be able to include those in this COVID relief fund. The other thing is that we've done some improvements with the, with the ESER funds, and we did, that, that's a direct grant that we write purchase orders against. So we're talking, Amy's talking about all of this remote learning, and there's things in the schools that needed an upgrade because next month, in a few weeks, we're going to get 75 free Chromebooks from the state, and these are going to be distributed. So we need to increase our capacity for this distance learning. And we just had that Wi-Fi installed, and they're, they're working out some of the little, you know, last-minute glitches within that process, but that's increasing our capacity. And we also, last summer, installed a hotspot in the front of the school. So as I mentioned before, we actually had remote learners coming and parking in the, parking in the parking lot and being, be able to access the internet and, and to have their Chromebooks. So I've, I've written some descriptions, but please remember that some of these things that we might be purchasing now and getting reimbursement for will be taken out of the capital improvement plan that we thought that we would do two or three years down the road. So the town and the taxpayer should recognize some savings because if we can utilize COVID relief funds to get these upgrades now because we need them, then that will help with, with our process. There was one other little thing with, with regards to the, to the budget, and I just, I just wanted to mention that the Connecticut State Department, I'm going to ask for a waiver because the, the grant, when it came through, I had listed an equal amount in personnel and safety equipment and, and upgrades, and they did not fund the personnel section. And I, I hope that I can move some of the money from the equipment into the personnel to help us with some of the things that we're, we're going to do. So this is where we are right now, and I hope to have more information by the October 8th meeting. So today, we, we have, you know, a request that you rescind the, the September 9th motion to have an early dismissal day effective September 30th. And then I, I, I would recommend perhaps another motion to review the return to school on Wednesdays at the October 8th meeting. And when we come in, we would have more time, and we might even come in and say, we can implement this, you know, as soon as possible, but we, we want to make sure that we're, we're doing this the correct way. And then, Amy, you haven't, you haven't made a recommendation that we purchased that online program yet, have you? So, you know, we're just, we don't have that information, but if we, if we find that this is, you know, a good program that we would, we would use, then we would, you know, see if we could implement that as quickly as possible to allow us to do that. And then the other issue is to allow time for faculty and staff to strengthen the remote learning component by, by setting up, you know, an after-school program because I do think that we would wind up needing that. So those are the, basically the four components of, of this meeting and the priorities of this meeting.
So Amy, what, you had mentioned that program was going to be for the third through eighth grade. What are you looking at for the kindergarten through third population, or is that a smaller, more manageable section of your distance learners?
It is. So our K to 2 population, which also includes our remote pre-K, those are provided with our, with our staffing changes that went into effect with Mrs. Wyland. So that they receive those pieces through her, and it's really hard to find an online program for younger learners and being able to really get them engaged in something. So we would keep that, that group the same, it's a stable group, and that's working very well for that age group. It's our three through eight where the stakes get a little bit higher and being able to really, as a classroom teacher, then fulfill those needs for those kids, you know, and, being able to make sure that you're covering those standards, however you're covering them, and, and delivering it that way. So our pre-K, our, really our K to 2 will remain the same, and our three through eight is a projected change. Now, if we don't move forward with, with this program, let's say that it's just something that, you know, even, you know, as an administrator or the teachers that are reviewing it, even as a parent reviewing it, like, if it's not what we expected it to be, then we will come up with our plan for then, how are we going to get, you know, get from now to June with success with remote learning? So that's really what we're looking at here. So which, which avenue is going to be the best fit and be able to do that? Is it going to be an online program that's pacing kids and doing those pieces? Or is it going to be revamping what we're actually doing in class in looking at both of those models? So when we review that, we'll have a little bit better indication of what, what it will be.
And Mrs. Wyland is also working with a group of pre-K students, preschool students remotely.
Okay. The questions that you have coming in on those Wednesdays, are teachers fielding them themselves, or do you have, because I know in one of the plan reviews, you had mentioned you had, I think it was Ms. Kelly was kind of like your triage person for those technical problems. Is that, are you filtering that through one person, or are teachers handling that themselves?
It depends on what the question is. So if it's Google Classroom, Seesaw, so we actually will filter it down to a classroom teacher, depending on the age, grade level, what they're doing at that moment in time. I don't like being the school secretary. I have two very competent school secretaries. However, I am always listening for the, what they're asking because sometimes it's easier for me to, sometimes I answer the questions. I know what it is. At times it's a technical where Mr. Ward or Mrs. Boland will support the, the technical piece with Chromebook and iPad and getting those pieces. Sometimes it's Mrs. Kelly because the classroom teacher is on a natural live meet, they can't stop. So sometimes those go through Mrs. Kelly because then she can go down to that classroom, the teacher's in progress, but can't, you know, necessarily stop because you have 10 kids in front of you. So it's really a mix of people who are filtering them. Sometimes older kids will call in and want to talk to their classroom teacher instead of joining a meet for, you know, their internet's down, whatever reason, and they'll talk to them. So there's, there's whole slow things that happen on a Wednesday that, you know, that a lot of people try to help and address. I think anybody that's available kind of takes it on. It just depends what it, what it actually is.
Yeah, and I know you're, you're obviously already looking at this, but I'm just thinking of if there's ways that you can take some of that, you know, even if you have like a para. I know, I know with my little learner, his para is always on the line with his teacher. So, but I, I know you're already thinking of these types of things, but I just, you know, I, I, I 100% understand that, you know, things are changing every week. I just get nervous of this, you know, I just don't want to continue pushing it off, you know, bringing them back. I, I can speak from as a parent. My, my little guy, he learns much better at school. So for us, that fifth day is a big deal, honestly. And we're doing the best that we can, and just like every other family out there is doing the best that they can. And I know you guys are trying to get them back. I just, I, it makes me nervous to continually push it off, you know. Do you think when we come to the next board meeting, you will have a solid plan of what, how we're going to address this fifth day?
Yes. And I think that it's really dependent upon what our, how we're presenting our remote learning because that is what we need to help our teachers address is, is that piece. You know, and we had talked at 1.2, you know, there's all different models out there, and one of the considerations I had said to Adam also, you know, there is also a consideration, you know, do you, on that fifth day, bring back your K to 2 population first?
That's what I was going to ask, yeah.
Yeah. So, and we had talked about that, you know, from a, from a parent perspective, Wednesday, it, yes, I can imagine exactly how hard it is and having, you know, trying to get people to work for you that don't want to work for you is extremely difficult. And so we're just, you know, we've got to think broad picture of all of our kids and how can we help them all and what is the best for all of them. I think that coming back for the eighth and, and having that plan and knowing this is what we're going to do at this moment in time. Now, it could change on December 17th, but this is what we're doing in this moment in time. I think having that, I like things typed out in the document so everybody's clear on what's happening. So I think that, you know, and knowing that this is what's going to continue on. I would agree, Megan, we don't want to, you know, keep pushing out if we don't, if we don't have to. If we have fixed all these pieces or most of them, I would feel pretty confident in being able to say, okay, let's come back for a noon dismissal for a few weeks and see how that goes.
I was going to say by our next board meeting, we could have positive kids and be shutting the classroom down, which will change everything.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, to keep kind of just pin a certain date seems to be, I think if you come back with a plan, we can look at a date when you come back, when you're, when you feel that you're ready to go forward because we've done very well so far with the plan, as opposed to trying to keep picking on a Wednesday to start this on, just kind of keep it open, see how we're doing by October, see how the rest of the state is doing, what the high schools are doing, because that affects us.
It does. The high schools do.
Great push to get it done by a certain date doesn't seem to be what to do to give, take off the pressure.
I think knowing to have at some point an insight, you know, how we can make a switch over, and I think it's planning it. I think planning it correctly, it'll be an easy switch over. And then, you know, bringing them back. So I'm hopeful that we can, you know, smoothly, I mean, we could get a phone call, I could get a phone call in 20 minutes that says there's a positive case in one of my classrooms. And I think that's the reality that, you know, tomorrow we could be closed, you know, if that, you know, we don't know, we don't know. So, but I, you know, I would agree. I think it's, it's a lot easier to have kids in-person in front of you.
No.
You know, everybody would agree with that. So much easier to have kids in-person in front of you, but with all this extra lingering, you know, around us, we have to solidify those things before we can get that piece back in for us.
See, I mean, do you think, you and Kate were talking about the K through two, do you think there's any merit to looking at that as an option for those that were, have to dismiss well?
I think that.
Looking at, but I don't know what you guys think.
Um, I think for right now, I think that we, I prefer to do it as a, you know, if we did it, I would like to take all our kids back, but if we can't, then I think that would be the next step. Okay, if we can't take everybody right now, then what could, who could we take back? And those would be, we know that little kids need, all kids need, but smaller kids, that is, that repetitive instruction and being in-person is huge for them, as it is for all. So I think that come, come the eighth, I think that's when we'll be able to say, okay, what's our next step? Are we coming, can we come back three through eight? Because then you say, I mean, K through two, because then you say to yourself, well, what's just another 100 more kids? You know, so I, you know, you think of that, like, well, what's just another 100 more? So I, I feel like when, I feel like when we come back at the next board meeting, we'll be able to say like how this is going, and it really is dependent on cases. You know, there have been a few around us in surrounding towns, as you read in news reports, at, at high schools, a lot of high schools, and a lot of staff members. So it's important, we, we are constantly talking about mask wearing and social, you know, those things because they're really important at this point, as you hear those stories, to continue to do that.
Yeah, I saw Patrick on the front page.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, he was in the front page of Norwich Bulletin, but it was, it was just like, oh, my good buddy Patrick.
I know.
Give him such credit because, I mean, he's, he's just, you know, obviously Tracy works with him very closely, and, you know, it's huge shoulders to put the weight of, of this direction on, but I, yeah, it's, it is, I, I, we are, we are certainly looking at these numbers regularly, and, and thank you so much for, and pressing upon the children the importance of all the, the critical factors we need to get right, you know, with the hand washing and the masks and the distancing. Distancing has got to be terribly difficult with these little guys and girls.
It's like distancing little kittens all the time. If you think you can do it, then you can.
Right.
In order to do this...
Small kids and where they're going after school. You can't control where these high school kids are after school. Many of them work and they're going here and there. It's hard. While they're still in grade school, you're kind of controlling their day, and you can keep them home or not have them out with a huge group.
In, in order to proceed, we would need a motion to rescind the 9, 10, 20 Board of Ed decision to come back on the 30th.
Motion?
Do you have a motion for that?
Motion for me?
Kathy, second in, Arca, on favor for the motion?
Aye.
Aye. May I oppose?
And I'm, I'm not sure we need to put a motion down to review this on October 8th because we do want to come back, and we hope that we can have a more definitive time, you know, plan with timelines and other, other things to help with a proper re-entry. So I guess that would just, this would just be put on the agenda for the October 8th meeting.
Okay. Yeah, good. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of what-ifs to get there. So, I mean, you know, obviously we'll work closely on the reopen committee to gain guidance on that, but I think that that's prudent to just leave it as the next agenda to discuss, and hopefully we do have a clearer picture. So, do you need anything for extra staffing?
We will come back with that. That's going to be a component. And at one point, we were looking, when I put in the COVID relief fund, I actually put in money to hire a, a remote learning teacher. And if, if I get approval to move some of the, you know, the equipment into the personnel, then we would have, you know, at least funds. And th, those grant funds are available until December 30th. So, but that would give us a few months to, you know, of support for any extra personnel. But as I did say, when Amy and Lloyd and I were talking, we, we were reviewing the fact that we might have to resurrect our after-school program. And remember, there's programs that we're not doing right now that are in the, you know, curriculum accounts and other things where we could use those funds for after-school tutors. Plus, we had a retirement, which leaves some funds in, in the teacher account. So I, I think that we should be able to cover that. We'll come back with a plan.
Okay. So with that, it sounds, our next meeting obviously is Thursday, October 8th. We'll have a fulsome, more fulsome agenda there. Um, we'll have a fulsome, more fulsome agenda there. Um, so we need a motion to move into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, Chris? Second, Megan? All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into executive session at, what's our time on the clock? It's seven fifty-one.
Good night.
Thanks, Laura.